I'm moving to get them in.
Second that, all in favor?
Those are last year's.
Keep them for next year.
Okay. They might not be very happy. I was gonna wait, give it a break so I can cut them off.
Can't get it. Black.
Oh, sorry. Oh, boy.
Then my dress up my home is fine.
You got them out of order for that reason?
Oh, I would care for them in a quarter. Just something mixed up between here and there. It's time to grow. Kathy's gone from Wednesday on till Tuesday of next week. Wednesday of next week, so if I reject something that I should please tell them not to do. I mean, it's been a while since I've done.
Oh, boy.
What's going on?
I do different things differently than she does, so. Of course, they haven't gotten one for an hour. Please still in the text me or call me and say, hey, I think I'll be your number. We have a webinar on Wednesday of AARP again. If anybody wants to say, and I will be more than happy to forward the login. It's just how you can use it again, but if you want to watch it, I will share it. I think it's Wednesday.
We want to receive it, not watch it.
I know! I am gonna call that little number back again today, but it is Wednesday at 1:00.
The order can change. Yeah, that's what we want to see.
I'll call that today.
And lesson learned, I will not transfer that money into another account ever again.
I never dreamed that it would be in another account.
Thirteen hundred dollars costs us five hundred thousand.
I talked to Kim.
That's what it boils down to.
Kim Tucker is now working at Sonic. She's the system manager at Sonic, so I was talking to her about it, and she said, "We would have called you and asked you guys why you was, you know, why is this?" I'm like, "I know you guys would have," but it probably didn't go locally and probably went to... I said, "Yeah, it went to G."
It did. Now, and we need to use the local bank or something like that? I think you had a good one there. I promise you, always want to turn it up. We'll put her somewhere else.
I'll lay it a little bit here. That's not that large of a now.
Ah, it's insane.
Probably told you that's not that large of a now, but. Jake, after the meeting, Asha got back with me with her federal funds. If you'll come over and sign that, that will help me. Because SIFAs due Monday of next week, and she said that her and I are on the same page, and I'm good. So I told her, "I just have you sign it real quick." I may have to bring it over, sorry, that's the way on my desk.
What, that, that, what, the thing?
No, that's the, the federal for the SIFAs report, all the FEMA stuff. She had called, because I have somebody that had not used sixty-five thousand, and I cannot find it in last year's SIFAs file, which district it was, and... So, anyway, but she said, "Nope, everything's been used," and we agreed on the amount that came in, so. Laura said, "Go down and help."
Yes, that's where she said.
Victoria, who's telling me that will... Oh, it's not, or already been on.
I'm gonna take that care of it. Go ahead, Kay.
See if that's my illness. That line, that may not get, did it fix that one, aren't you?
Oh, did it?
Do you want me to order one for the other one? Just print everything off that printer that we have.
I don't. I mean, sooner or later, you're gonna need to fix it, whether you want to wait till the budget, do it that way, or we just... What, how high was it?
Well, that's what I want to ask them when they come in, because that came right from the, you know, the first time they sent the wrong one, and the second time when they sent it, it had the invoice in it. It was only three hundred and thirteen dollars, but they told me it was four hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Well, that's what I was thinking until then.
So I'm gonna say, "Hey, why are you getting that much markup when they're not installing it? They're not doing anything other than ordering it." And I mean, and it actually did take me five minutes. I mean, it's just a little bitty thin roller in there, and you pop two little, um, tabs. See how it's printing this line? We did print, the one that was going into our books from our documents being received, we did fix that one.
Oh. Just give it another one, Jay. How did you throw them at us?
I think they're stuck together, because I noticed that when I was signing those papers to indicate it's a lead that.
That little printer's making that line, costs four hundred bucks to fix it, but she had the money in her account, so we took it out of County General. You want to wait till she gives a budget, or you want to...
I don't, I didn't budget it in anyway, so.
Take it out of County General, just fix it.
I mean, and I asked them, I said, "How much is it?" Because when I ordered those printers, first everything has went up. The printers themselves were only twelve hundred. Well, you put a four hundred dollar part on a twelve hundred dollar printer, is it worth putting that on it? But now the printers are eighteen hundred.
Oh. Sure, everything's gotta go away.
Of course.
I'd just go ahead and fix it, now we have it, and I won't go down.
But like I said, you know, on our POs and that stuff, it's not that big of a deal, but were those documents were being printed in those books in our vault? I hated just to have that line, and that's so weird that it's the exact same spot on both printers, and this maintenance kit will fix it.
Back pretty flawlessly.
I, well, they're two different even brands of printers. I guess they're both HPs, but one is, I mean, two different models of printers. But he said, "Yeah, he's doing that." I mean, and he did, he tried multiple things. We were getting, you know, those, those printer cartridges from that Coast to Coast, which are so much cheaper, so we went ahead and just ordered an actual HP printer cartridge from Office Solutions, or whatever they are now, and did the same thing. But I mean, he tried walking us through changing various things, it didn't work.
So it lasts?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's kind of why I order my printers through Pelcro, and they're a little more expensive through Pelcro, but then they do actually help me try to work on fixing that. Not that time.
I'm moving to get the M and O.
Second that, all in favor? Want the purchase orders?
I have, like, it's from this one, two, three, Gulfstream Rescue, Mesquite Tango Rescue, I'm sorry, jet responders, EMS, fairgrounds, sheriff and assessor. There's EMS, fairgrounds, and we still have to decide.
Get the blank in a second. All in favor? For crossing permits. Monthly officer report.
I have one from the election board, court clerk, and the court clerk preservation. They're, one of them just has my signature, the other one has. Other should have both of yours. One signature on that one. Who's the first one that was signed? The preservation for court clerk.
I'll make a motion. All in favor? Burn ban.
I hear Dr. Bradley.
I got a quarter, let's flip it.
He said he think we need to leave it on, so.
Who?
Bradley. Five key. We had that farm.
Oh, he ain't had no rains since. I've had a lot of people call wanting to burn their trash, but...
That ain't raining the four deaths.
I tend. Just a little bit, that fire we had on the county line. Thursday, we got called out at two o'clock, I got on at nine thirty. Cedar trees and all that burnt, we had about... My gosh, Cherokee and Burnt Innerty. Well, Keedham, Holly, Manchester, Bedford. I don't...
Your decision, Marvin.
I'm gonna know he's a gay, and so it's your decision.
I'd say leaving on for another.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm a day, I just...
You're a day, okay.
No, I'm a day, I'm not.
Upstate.
I'm a state. I just don't think it works, so here, local green. I guess I signed it, so I'm...
Mark that out.
No.
It don't matter.
It don't matter what it is. We need to X the one or two that we...
Well, whichever one, Jake. That's no exceptions, so if you want to accept the other two, then you can mark the other two.
We want welding, cutting, grinding activities to be checked in.
And the bottom on the...
Could we add a line for the people that live at their houses, house burn barrels? And, because that, that, they, most of them has water hoses and...
I don't know why we couldn't.
Well, I don't think it'd be no different than a cooker.
Than a campfire outdoor cooking thing.
Yes, but I've had two or three people call me that do not have trash related services.
Just tell them that we're gonna add them, I mean, now and just write that in there.
I think that would be a fact. That would make me feel better about the burn ban, because...
Well, this be, it's whole, and it is, as long as it's provided in a non-flammable service away from flammable.
Can you just write trash right beside that? Outside.
Are you talking about the campfires, that where you're playing? I'm gonna put, and trash.
Outdoors. Well, not, you know, like, house trash, household trash.
Burn barrel at home.
Burn barrel, yeah, something like that.
Household trash?
I just think it, because then people live out there, they get two or three weeks worth of trash built up, and the varmints get in it, their dogs get in it, I understand why they...
And it contain, can...
Controlled.
Controlled, right?
There you go.
Well, I mean, it's just like your barbecue grill, you're not gonna go out and cook that shit.
Well.
Some people are like, "I can think of..."
It's, it's still common sense.
It is, and that's the whole idea, it's common sense.
Ain't much of that left.
Common sense, not so common anymore. In a local green, for Napa County, Grand County.
They didn't say anything, so probably just no action on it. I meant to call you before I...
Okay.
So I haven't seen anything yet for a month, so they'll probably put it in their meeting today. So no action, you've got a motion and a second one, no action.
Oh, we can go ahead.
I'll test second that, all in favor? Resolution for AARP funds, Jackson Rexing Division.
I just put the twenty-nine thousand Jacksons on there, and I still have an approval, so we never see the second one.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I did talk to Mr. Jackson, told him after first week, walked over, I was a little bit tired, but lay her down. Transfer document, county clerk. Aye. I, I don't know.
For next day, man.
This is a little scanner that we just, right down where I put twenty, the eight-eight just signed below it, but it's written in the meeting, um, a little scanner, and I had forgot all about it, and so they've been using it for quite some time, so, oh, want that over?
In, no worry.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? County clerk, go out, twelve month bids for twelve month ballots, election bid.
Copy everyone, just sign that top page. We're sending them to our normal three Midwest printing and Royal Printing in Tulsa County, so I will put those in the mail today for them.
Just sign anywhere here.
Yeah, just sign on those three lines, it's fine, yeah, that's just the copy that stays with me.
All in favor? Data Works Plus Agreement Fingerprint Machine.
This is a fingerprint machine for the sheriff's office. Rick's already signed it, but you guys will sign that last page there underneath of him.
Nate.
Nate.
Yeah, he's got plenty of time for that.
Oh, Captain.
Second.
All in favor? Private Propfees for District One, ease with for parallel. I'm moving to get the even.
All second that.
All in favor? Private Propfees for District Two, remove.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Century Business Technologies Annual Meeting Agreement, printers for treasure.
This is for the printers. Was placed on the first page for one signature, and that is then for the actual sales order on the third page, first page of third page, Mike. I know, I'm trying to find where it was, it says, yeah. And you're away, yeah.
I'm moving, can't be green.
Second.
All in favor? State of Oklahoma Officer, juvenile affairs detention.
Never mind on this one, this one that we've already signed, they just sent it back to me. I did not look close enough, I'm so sorry on that, so no action.
Under proceedings?
I'm moving to Gary.
Second.